Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice published in the Korean News. Notice published on the Bolton Board in the Municipal Building. Notice made available to the Township Clerk. Notice sent to the Korean News and Star Ledger. Will the Clerk please call the rolls?
Mr. Tillery?
Here.
Mr. Weissman?
Here.
Mr. Patel?
Yeah, yeah.
Kalpech. Mr. Regio? Mr. Mitterondo?
Here.
Mr. Ellie?
Here.
And Chairman Cahill?
Here. Will everyone please stand for the salute to the flag?
..................
Mr. Caneley, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
There is one change to tonight's agenda. The application of Chris Baffeltick, 1120 Eva Street. The July meeting. Without further notice, can I have that date, please?
I can't hear you, Jim. The date was July 11th.
July 11th?
July 11th, yes.
Application will be carried to July 11th with no further notice. Those are all the changes that I have. Thank you, Mr. Caneley. Let's move on to item number five, 24-ZB-13V. Christopher Holt?
Hello, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, and you just swear you're in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, sir.
Explain to the board why you're here. You can put your hand down.
Okay. I'm here because we want to install mini splits in order to save energy and become more carbon neutral. And we are really into that. And so we started this by putting in a permit to put in mini splits. And we did them. And then we realized when I called for inspection that I only had put down on the original permit one instead of two. So when they asked me for details on the second one, I gave them the details and they said, you need a variance for that. So that's why I'm here. So it is already installed. Sorry about that. So this unit, I think, I don't know what copies you have, but I don't know if I can share my screen and get to the pictures that I prepared. I don't, I don't see them here, but I had them all ready to go, but somehow they're not here right now. Anyway, I'll get back to this. So I could send the photos in order to put them onto the record if you like. The photos show that from the street, well, yeah, that, 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 that's a close-up view. Yeah, that's a close-up view. And then I just took some pictures from the street and from my neighbor's driveway. And it is approximately 35 feet from his house. There's a lot of bushes in between, but it is visible from his house. It's very quiet. The specs on this say that it shouldn't be louder than 55 dB, which is basically conversation noise. It's much quieter than the three-window air conditioners that we would have had on that side of the house in normal years. So it's, I think it's an improvement in terms of noise when it comes to that kind of thing. It's also very energy-saving, and so that's, I think, a plus for everybody.
Christopher, did your neighbor voice any concerns when he came aware of the situation?
I speak to him often. He never voiced any concerns. I tried to get him to come to the meeting, but he travels a lot, and so he wasn't able to come. If you'd like, I could ask him to prepare a statement and he could, he could prepare that and send it in. We could have it notarized or whatever.
I don't know if that'd be necessary. I think, quite honestly, he had concerns he would be on this call tonight, whether he's in town or traveling. It's just a matter of a phone call. So when we go to the public portion, if anyone has concerns, we can entertain that at that time. Mr. Chadwick, did you have any concerns that you wanted to address?
No, no. Most of the listed variances are all pre-existing. The retaining wall that's brought up is maybe 18 inches high.
Okay.
And it's just a front yard.
Gotcha.
Landscape.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other members?
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, I can expedite this, Chris, at this point. Less is better. Any other members of the Board have any questions or comments about this application? Hearing none, I'm going to open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any comments or questions about this application? Ms. Buckley?
No one. You could raise your hand on the bottom of your computer if you have any questions. No one, Chairman?
Okay, close the public portion, and I make a motion to approve this application.
Hold a second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes. Your application has been approved. We will memorialize it in a written document at our next meeting, and we'll send that document to you.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night, sir.
Have a good night.
Let's move on to item number six, 24-ZB-24V. Ikena Ozims? Is he off with you, Mr.? There you go.
Yes, I am here. I am here. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
I swear.
Your name and address, please. You put your hand down.
My name is Ikena Ozims. My address is 1 Azalea Place, Biscata Way, New Jersey, 08854.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board why you're here?
I am here because I'm looking to install a fence, a barrier around my property here in Azalea Place because my children play outside. And they've been, there's been a lot of movement along the road. We can't guarantee that they will be safe without some kind of barrier around the house. And that's why I'm making this application. There's also, when we bought the house, there was a shed that was there before we bought the house. But I believe if we put a fence around the house, we'll be able to cover the shed, and that should take care of that.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes, there's a report that makes comments in terms of site impact. Ma'am, have you seen this report? It's dated May 14th. Did you, did you see it?
Is that question for me or for someone else?
It's for you.
For you.
Yeah, the staff report. Yeah, he saw it. He came in with it and had some questions.
Yes, I got the memorandum that I was asking that, I got the memorandum.
There's a bunch of recommendations. Can you agree with those or not?
I don't.
All right, explain what? Let's do number one.
Okay.
The existing shed, it recommends it be relocated from to the rear or side property line. You're not willing to do that.
Well, the existing shed was there before we bought the house. And I believe if we put a fence, a barrier around the house, it will cover the shed from being visible from the outside. So I believe putting up a fence should take care of the, of the shed itself. Actually, we're using it.
Let's go and deal with the fences and see if your comment makes any sense. The next one is item two, is the fence along Azalea Place should be moved to in line with the existing principal building. And your comment on that is?
My comment is I'm looking to, on Azalea Place, I can lower the fence from a six-foot barrier to a four-feet so that it complies with some of those recommendations, but I...
It would be 50% open? Be a picket or rail or one of the, some of that sort? Is that correct?
I don't, I don't have, I don't plan to make it 50% open. But if the Board recommends that, I will consider that at this moment. However...
It's required by ordinance. I think you should comply with what that recommendation is.
Okay, I can go with, I can go with a 50% open fence in the front side of the Azalea Place.
And can you do that along Crestwood as well?
I don't plan to do that along Crestwood because that will be, that will provide the barrier for the shed, the existing shed. And it also provide protections for my kids who...
Four-foot high fence, how big are these kids? How old are they?
I have a six-year-old David who is very, very active. I have a four-year-old and a 12, 13-year-old boy.
Okay. And the four-foot fence you don't think will be adequate?
It wouldn't be adequate for the...
Why would a six-foot fence be adequate?
They kick the ball over the fence and you see them running across the road, and that would defeat the purpose of the fence itself.
Yeah, I, I, I hear what you're saying, but I just don't think the ball leaving the yard, a four-foot fence or a six-foot fence is going to make a lot of difference. I think you ought to reconsider the recommendations. Keep uniformity so that your front yard looks, doesn't have one type of fence on one side of the street and another type of fence on the Azalea side. I just don't think that's appropriate. And it doesn't meet the ordinance as well. So you're offering to meet, substantially meet the ordinance by doing a four-foot high fence that would be 50% open. How you choose the design is up to you. Can you agree with that?
Well, I really like to. I would love to agree with you, but the major reason why I'm appearing before the Board today is because I'm looking to have a privacy, not just privacy, but protection for these children. 50% open in the Crestwood, along the Crestwood area will now provide the protection that I'm looking for, for this, for my kids. Because I know how busy and how active they can be. And I know my David can slide through the fence and get into trouble. And that's the reason why I'm asking for a variance here.
Well, your alternative to provide the privacy is to install landscaping. The fence item, in terms of safety, you could put six-foot-high fence in conformance with the ordinance on this property. And there isn't any reasons that you've stated that you couldn't do that. The Board is offering a alternative, and I suggest you consider it.
Mr. Ozims, you have to provide legal proofs that support your request for variances. You have not provided any of those legal proofs. Putting a fence in for the safety of your children is not one of the legal proofs. So if you were to ask this Board to vote on this, as the Board lawyer, I would have to tell them that there is not sufficient evidence to grant this variance. The Board has offered you a compromise. Mr. Ozims, if you were to go with the, if you were to go with the four-foot and you're concerned about anything getting in, whether deer or kids or balls getting out, you could put deer fencing, which is a clear, it's a mesh that could go on the fence itself, would prevent animals from getting in, not jumping over, but getting through. And it would be a deterrent to your child to get, you know, you'd have to actually peel and break through the fencing. That's something you might want to think about, but I, I agree with Mr. Caneley. I don't think we're going to be able to support a six-foot solid fence along Crestwood.
Well, I'm willing to go with a four-foot solid fence along Crestwood if the Board would allow it so that I can make sure that I have sufficient protection for my kids' safety and also protection from the incoming animals that come from the back of that area. And that's really my, what I'm requesting, and it's really my humble request, if the Board will grant it.
Mr. Cahill, the staff report recommends a six-foot fence at 25 feet. He has a 40-foot setback.
Yeah, that's got to be changed as well.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, on Crestwood.
Yeah. What do you think?
Well, I think the open aspect of the fence is important, and she wants a solid. The way of dealing with the open aspect of the fence is simply with a wire or plastic that can be attached to the fence will stop any animals.
That's what I recommend as well, yeah.
So I don't recommend you grant the four-foot solid. I think it should stay 50% open. I think the compromise is substantial compared to what the ordinance requires. She has the option as well as put landscaping in, in terms of privacy.
Sure. Mr. Ozims, I would take a minute, couple of seconds there. Try and think if you can do, if you can deal with what we're offering as a compromise. If not, then I'll put it to a vote after we have the public portion, obviously.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. Can you just, what exactly are you offering him? Because there's been so much back and forth.
I apologize.
Yeah, my notes.
I think we're offering a four-foot, 50%.
But he doesn't need a variance, then. That's what's permitted. Then he doesn't, then there's no reason for him to be here.
Okay.
No, I'm just, that's what I'm asking.
Well, based on John's testimony, I thought that that would be appropriate for the, at least Crestwood because he's offered to do it along Azalea, so...
Can he do like a board-on-board, maybe, like a shadow box, Mr. Chadwick?
A four-foot higher board-on-board just is not attractive. It needs the height. It's an alternative, but I just don't think it would be very attractive.
Mr. Ozims, what I could do is put this application off, give you an opportunity to come into the Town Hall and discuss it with, you know, some of the people there to give you better options if this is too much, you know, to grasp around tonight, you know, a couple of minute meeting. Otherwise, if I do put to a vote, I can pretty much guarantee you it won't be a favorable one.
Yeah.
Well...
I could put it on the 27th.
Why, why, so why don't you go and meet with the people in the Planning Department and Town Hall? I think probably there's other options that can be discussed. I think the one that we just discussed now made sense, but doesn't mean it has to be. And I think you do yourself a good service just taking a few weeks to come back with an alternative.
I will take, I will go.
You want me to, we'll put this off till the 27th of June, and you'll come back after you've discussed with the Planning Board what to, some options and alternatives?
Unfortunately, 24th of June, I will be out of town. Would that be a Zoom, 27th of June, would that be a Zoom meeting or in-person meeting?
Zoom.
No, it'll be Zoom.
Okay, I would, I would do that.
Let's do that. Okay, Laura, Jim? Okay, so anybody here on the Ozims' application, 1 Azalea Place? It is being adjourned until June 27th with no further notice by the hour. We'll see you in two weeks, Mr. Ozims.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Take care.
Bye-bye.
Let's move on to item number seven, 24-ZB-27V, Verizon Wireless.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of...
Is anybody else losing audio? Yeah, Mr. Purcell, your audio is fading out. Still no go.
Nothing.
Mr. Purcell, looks like you're muted.
Is this better?
Yes, much better.
Okay, good. All right, I think it was because I was using the standing desk. All right, my name's Ed Purcell. I'm an attorney at Price, Mees, Shulman, and Dear Minio here tonight on behalf of Verizon Wireless. Verizon has an existing base station. That means they have antennas on a building at 251 Circle Drive North. That's block 4302, lot 11.01. We're here tonight because Verizon requested a zoning permit to replace one antenna on top of that building with two antennas and to do some, add some additional ancillary equipment, add an equipment cabinet. The zoning officer directed us to the zoning board for interpretation. So we're here. Basically, we've discussed this before. There's a federal law, Section 6409A of the 2012 Middle Class Tax Relief Act, which states that when a wireless carrier is proposing to add an antenna or co-locate or revise its equipment, as long as it's not a substantial change, the application has to be approved and can't be denied. So that's what this is. It is not a substantial change. So pursuant to the zoning officer's request for interpretation, we would request that the zoning board direct the issuance of a zoning permit for this change, which is not, which is not substantial.
Mr. Purcell, was the original antenna placed with all zoning board approvals?
Yes, it was.
Okay, are you increasing the height of the antennas?
The height of the antenna is increasing slightly by roughly 4.4 feet, but that's within the amount permitted by the federal law.
Are you changing the equipment base?
The equipment base is not, no, not.
And have you supplied or will supply the RF report showing that the new antennas will comply with the federal regulations?
We will provide that as a condition of approval.
And how about a structural report indicating that the building can support the new equipment?
We will stipulate to that, too.
Okay, that's all that I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Jim. Any other, any other members of the Board have any questions, comments?
Just one thing. Prior conditions of the approval, Jim, should carry on to this, correct?
Yes.
Good.
Any other members of the Board have any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this application?
No one, Chairman?
Okay, close the public portion. I make a motion to approve this. Can I get a second?
Hold a second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes. Mr. Purcell, we'll memorialize this at our next meeting.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
You too, sir. Thank you. Move on to item number eight, 24-ZB-25V, David Richardson. Mr. Richardson, are you present?
Yes, sir.
Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth, so help me God? You're muted, sir. Mr. Richardson, you're muted?
There you go.
There you go. There you go.
Yes.
Mr. Richardson, could you explain to the Board why you're here?
I can't hardly hear you, sir.
Can you explain to the Board why you're here?
Oh, yes. I want to erect a fence alongside of my garage. I have recently cut down some dead trees, and as a consequence of it, it, my backyard is fully, you know, you can see my backyard from the street. And so I like to do something to deal with that issue.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Can you shine it?
Mr. Richardson, did you see this staff report dated May 20th?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you comply with those recommendations or do you want to discuss them?
I, what, are you referring to, can you, can you point to which ones in particular?
Let's start with number one. There's a accessory structure that wasn't shown on the survey, and the recommendation is to be moved at least eight feet from a property line. Can you do that?
I can't do, let me, let me give you a little background. As you probably know, that, that pool was, was put there in the 50s, you probably know. And I, and I moved in 2002. That structure was there, so I can only imagine it was there a lot longer. So I come to love that structure. I didn't put it there, so...
Is it on a concrete base?
Excuse me?
Is it on a concrete foundation?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
What is separating that accessory structure from your neighbor?
A stone wall.
Any vegetation along it?
No, sir.
The picture that you provided, is that the stone wall in the background?
Yes, sir.
And your neighbor's deck is in, further in the background, correct?
Yes, sir.
Does appear to be some vegetation. I'll let the Board decide on that. The next item was the existing pool. We all know it's in nonconformity and is simply a comment. If and when the pool is replaced, it would be done in conformance with zoning. I don't think you need to respond to that. There's a fence in the front yard, and they're recommending realignment with the corner of the garage with some evergreens. Are you capable of doing that?
If, I would ask, is it, is it necessary to do that?
Yes, it is.
Or can I, can we?
The answer is yes.
It is necessary?
Yes, the comments weren't made lightly. They are made in consideration of your proposals. So if you can do that, I think we're done.
As, well, I'm referring to the other, sir, there's another issue. That's not the only fence that we're talking about. I'm not sure if you're aware of that.
Explain.
There's a fence that we're proposing on the other side of my garage. That fence is an issue.
Okay.
It should be outlined on the survey before you, I... Where, you see my garage?
I'm looking at the survey right now. The survey was adjusted by someone to show the shed, which wasn't included in the original survey. And you're saying the fence, the fence that is referred to in the report is recommended to be at the corner of the garage, which would block the view from Bay Street to the pool and backyard area. And are you agreeing to that or not?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Say that one more time, the...
Are you agreeing to that location?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I am.
All right, that's all we need to do.
That's fine.
So item one was left up in the air somewhat. The, we don't have any pictures of what this accessory structure looks like. I mean, is it in good shape?
Yes.
Are you referring, I'm a little bit confused.
There's a, now, item number one, we pushed aside for the time being.
Right.
We've got to get closure here, and...
Right, I, okay.
And answer the question. You said the shed's on a concrete foundation. Obviously, that's probably, can't be readily relocated. The other issue would be, let me finish. The other issue would be whether the shed is in good shape or is dilapidated, and it should be taken down. Now, which case is it?
It's in excellent shape.
Okay, fine.
Sleep it at that.
And you showed that there is a wall of vegetation between it and your neighbor?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I think all the questions in the, uh, township have been addressed, Mr. Chairman.
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
Huh?
We're not finished, I'm. I want to put up a new fence where my garage. Excuse me?
I think we're aware of that.
But I, I'm, I'm not sure if we came to a resolution about that, yet. Have we? I haven't heard you guys.
You said you could agree with the relocation of that fence and align it with the corner of the garage.
We're not concerned about the other side.
Not concerned.
There is no fence, there is no fence, sir, up yet. There is nothing there, I want to be able to put a fence there.
Okay.
That was the purpose that I came to you guys. I want, I want, uh, you know, a okay to do that, a permit to do that. There's nothing there now.
We understand that. But where you were, where you were proposing it, the staff's report is to align it with the garage, meaning instead of having it parallel to the front of your building, your home, it will, it will s, come back, be perpendicular to your side property line. That little kind of pie-shaped area that goes into your front yard is the variable. By moving it back, then you can, um, have, have the same privacy you talked about and I don't think it makes a whole lot of difference in terms of usable or.
Question, question, one, one question, sir. From the street, from the curb, I, I, if, my proposal was twenty-one, what, are you saying I could do the twenty-one?
Do you, do you see the dotted line that has the dimension thirty-four, one six three feet? If you put the fence along that line, that's what the report is recommending. So there's a small area that would not be, um, enclosed by the fence, that you could see like a little triangle area that's formed by that, dimension line and where you're, you're on the fence.
Okay.
I believe that's a pretty, I believe that's a pretty good compromise. With all the other things.
Okay, I'm, 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 I'm sorry, sir, just one more time, I'm just sorry. I just, I'm just a little confused when you say along the garage. I just need to know from the one, you said from, from south one six, six, three six east, from that point forward, I mean back, how far can I go from that point? From the street, that's what I want to know.
I'm trying to follow your questions immediately. I, let me start again. The report is recommending that you place this new fence.
Yeah.
Where the dotted line and the dimension of thirty-four, I'm sorry, thirty-four point six three feet, that would be the location of the fence. It would be, it would be forty feet, be roughly thirty feet from the street.
Okay, I got you.
Are we okay with that?
I, yes, sir.
Okay.
Alright. Any other members of the board have any questions? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this application?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion and I'd make a motion to approve the application where Mr. Chadwick told the applicant. Can I get a second?
I'll have a second.
Just call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson, your application, as amended, has been approved. We will memorialize it in a written document at our next meeting and we'll send that document to you. Thank you, sir, good evening.
You too.
Let's move on to item number nine, twenty-four dash ZB dash twenty-six V. Mario Ojeda and Etta Viviana Leles de Ojeda.
Uh, good evening, members of the board, board professionals, my name is Tim Arch, I'm an attorney licensed in the state of New Jersey. Uh, can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm here representing the Ojeda family, uh, for a property located on one forty-seven Montgomery Street. You may remember the Ojadas, uh, you were gracious enough to allow them to build their dream home here in Biscataway, um, a little while ago. Um, they have finished construction of that home, uh, it is gorgeous, they love, uh, living there. Um, inadvertently and unbeknownst to them, when they put in their HVAC system, they did not realize that that also included or was also counted towards a side yard setback. So the building itself meets the side yard setback, however, they did put in their HVAC system and so that does encroach into the side yard setback. And so because of that, we're back in front of you again to ask if we can have relief, uh, for that, uh, minor encroachment onto the side. Um, we did get recommendations from the, uh, the staff, uh, to screen that. Um, there is a fence permit that the Ojadas have already put in for that is going to go along the side of the home and there's going to be a gate that goes across that we believe is going to completely, um, obscure the view of the HVAC system on the side from, uh, the street. However, if the township feels that additional screening is necessary when they come and inspect for the CO, uh, we are more than happy to add additional, uh, screening to that, uh, to the, to the township standards. Um, one of the questions the report too was, why can't we move it? Uh, quite frankly, at this point, uh, it's already been installed, it would be, uh, it would require, uh, a lot of effort, uh, money, time to, to now reroute everything. Um, and we feel that it is really a very minor, uh, encroachment into the side. Again, it was done inadvertently. Um, and, and as, uh, I think you can see from, uh, I think the first application that was here that, uh, a, a lot of times people don't appreciate that an AC unit or a very small sort of, uh, accessory unit like that, uh, is counted towards those side yard setbacks. I do have the Ojeda family here, they are ready to testify if anybody has any direct questions for them. Um, but, uh, quite frankly, I think we can agree, uh, agree with all the comments of the report and they're available for questions if the board has any.
No, I don't think that's necessary right now. John, are we okay with just the, uh, screening?
The only thing I would do is I'd recommend that the, uh, application for the fence permit put a time uh, frame for when it's installed.
Oh, I believe it's already being installed, I think it's imminent, so.
It's in.
Yeah, I, I, the, the, the Ojadas are nothing but, um, very anxious to get everything complete.
So you can agree with that, that the fence would be installed within thirty days?
Uh, absolutely, or if we want to say screening will be installed within thirty days.
Screening will be on field inspection.
Uh, that is perfectly acceptable.
Thank you, Mr. Archer.
Nothing else, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other members of the board have any questions or comments? Hearing none, we're gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any comments or questions for this application?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion and we are gonna get a, uh, approval from me. Can I get a second?
I'll have a second.
Just call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes. We'll memorialize this at our next meeting, Mr. Archer.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Have a good night.
Let's move on to item number eleven, twenty-four dash ZB dash seventeen V, HC Enterprises Management.
Uh, good evening again, members of the board, board professionals, my name is Tim Arch. Still an attorney licensed in the state of New Jersey, I'm here representing HC Enterprises, uh, Inc. This is for a property located at ten eighty-one, uh, River Road, it's, uh, currently a vacant property, uh, it's a corner property that's, uh, right on the corner of, uh, River and Kroger Lane. Uh, we are, um, uh, proposing to build a single-family home, which is permitted there, uh, but we do need some relief. Uh, one is a dimensional relief, uh, for the lot, which as Mr. Chadwick points out in his, um, report is de minimis, it is a, uh, essentially point one one feet, uh, deficient on the, uh, the lot width. Um, and then the other, uh, variance that we are requesting is a front yard variance for the, uh, for, uh, the frontage on Kroger Lane. Uh, required is forty, uh, based on the, uh, the design that we have, we have a, uh, we are requesting a twenty-one foot, uh, front yard setback. Uh, Mr. Chadwick in his, uh, report did indicate that, um, or just to explain that, that setback is really taken up by a porch that's on the front of the property. Um, if you did away with the porch, the front yard setback would, uh, to the, uh, building envelope would be twenty-nine feet. Mr. Chadwick had suggested that we eliminate that porch. Um, obviously, we would like to keep it if the board is agreeable to that, however, um, if the board, uh, feel that we need to, uh, uh, eliminate that front porch and reduce the setback back to twenty-nine feet, we, uh, we would agree with that. Um, however, our preference would be to keep it. Um, we would ask, perhaps there would be some compromise where we could maybe make the porch a little less grand and so maybe compromise it maybe twenty-five feet as opposed to the entire twenty-nine, but we can certainly get there when we're at the end of the application. Um, I do have one witness tonight and that is, um, uh, Mr. Paul Fletcher, he is our, uh, engineer, uh, who will take us through the, uh, the survey and so unless there's any questions of me, um, we can, we can get to Mr. Fletcher.
Please proceed. Mr. Fletcher, please raise your right hand. For the testimony you're about to give should be the truth.
Yes, it will.
Thank you.
And, uh, your honor, or, uh, sorry, your honor, I was in court this morning.
You're on a time, man.
Uh, if I, if I may, I'm just gonna share my screen so that I can bring up the survey while Mr. Fletcher is, uh, is giving his testimony.
And I believe Mr. Fletcher has been accepted as an expert before this court on prior occasions.
Thank you, Mr. Cahill.
Thank you.
Alright, Paul, I believe the, uh, the survey, uh, is up zoomed in on the home, if you want to just sort of give us a brief overview of, uh, of what we're proposing and, uh, take it away.
Certainly, the property is a corner lot. It's on the corner of River Road and Kroger Lane. It's in the, uh, I believe it's the R-ten zone. I just needed to pull a copy of that up with my own screen so I can, I'll have a little bit better view, bear with me one second.
Paul, would it help if I shopped, stopped sharing, am I, am I interrupting something?
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm set now, I'm sorry.
Okay, good. That's okay.
Uh, yeah, the property's in the R- fifteen zone. Subject property is fifteen thousand and seventy-six square feet. Uh, required in the zone is, is, uh, fifteen thousand square feet. A minimum lot width is, uh, one hundred feet. Minimum lot depth is one hundred. We actually have a lot with slightly undersized and clearly de minimis lot width of ninety-nine, uh, point eight nine. Because of the setbacks, uh, the, uh, front setback being, uh, uh, forty feet, the, uh, side setback being T, ten, rather, uh, and the desire, uh, of the owner to face the property to Kroger Lane, I think you can understand why. The, the topography does not lend itself to an entrance off River Road. Plus River Road is a very busy road. Uh, it's much safer coming in off the side street Kroger. Uh, so to face the, uh, the house to Kroger, we're quite restricted in the depth of the house that we can, uh, provide. Being constrained by the forty-foot, uh, front setback and then the ten-foot side setback. So to put a, uh, a modern, uh, home, uh, on the property, to provide, uh, you know, future homeowners with, uh, you know, a adequate, the size for this market in this, this area of Biscataway, uh, we require, uh, we certainly request a variance relief for the front set to allow us to, uh, construct a slightly larger home. It, it is a corner lot, I can assure the board that there's no impact on site triangles at the corner. And it would certainly not, uh, uh, beat the vision, uh, of motorists on Kroger or River Road.
Uh, thank you, Paul. Uh, uh, real quick, just because you're familiar with the, uh, the area. The lot that's right behind, I guess, or right to the left of, uh, our proposed, um, uh, building, that existing home is actually quite close up against the, uh, the existing property line, is that correct?
Yes, it is, it's, uh, it's about ten feet off the common property.
And, and in fact, there's actually, I, I believe there's a brick patio that's actually technically encroaching into ours. So the proximity of that home being so close to our lot line and being non-conforming is also part of what is, uh, causing our home to, to really make more sense to, to push it a little bit forward into that front yard setback on Kroger, is that correct?
That is correct, I would agree with that statement, yes.
Okay, and, uh, again, just to zoom in on the, uh, the area that, uh, Mr. Chadwick was talking about, we are, uh, proposing a, oops, sorry. I'm hitting zoom out, that would be completely wrong. Okay, uh, that porch area in the front, um, this is what, uh, is projecting out that causes that twenty-one foot, uh, setback to the road, is that correct?
That, that is correct.
Okay, and if we eliminated that, then we would have approximately twenty-nine feet of setback, um, uh, to where the house is, correct?
Yes.
And from your perspective as a, as a civil engineer, uh, in order to, to e, enter into that front area of the home, it would be, quite frankly, uh, uh, preferable to have some form of, of steps or some form of a landing there, uh, from your opinion, would that be correct?
Yes, it would.
Okay. Uh, maybe not as grand as the porch that we're, that we're presenting here, but, uh, maybe something that wouldn't be right up against the, the side of the house would be appropriate.
Yes, I, I believe something that extended out, uh, at least three feet, uh, then steps from there would be appropriate and, uh, suitable for the home.
Okay, and so if we were to compromise at, at approximately, maybe a twenty-five foot setback, that could still accomplish that while not being as, uh, having the porch project out as far as that is, correct?
Correct.
Okay, uh, and we also got a report, I believe, from, uh, from Mr. Herrera, uh, that had four comments on it, the first two comments had to do with grading, uh, on the site, you have no issue complying with those two comments, is that correct?
We do not.
Okay, and I believe the third comment was about installing, um, the PVC conduit along the frontages and a lateral to the home. We have no objection to, uh, agreeing with that as well, correct?
That is correct, we would show those on, uh, on revised plans should the board see fit to grant this application.
Okay, and finally, uh, there is a note in there that there is a current moratorium on road opening on Kroger Lane. We are aware of that, that's until twenty twenty-eight. We're, and just so that the board is aware, we're currently in talks with the administration, uh, to see if there's any way that we could, uh, enter into some sort of agreement to at least do a driveway cut to avoid that moratorium, however, it is what it is, if we, if we have to wait until that time period in order to construct the house, we do understand that, but we just want to put on the record that we're aware of that and we do under, and we're trying to work with the administration to see if we can come to some compromise on that. Um, I have no further questions of Mr. Fletcher, I'll stop sharing my screen now.
Thank you. Any other members of, uh, John, you want to touch base?
I think my report basically recommended some kind of compromise and I think that's a reasonable offer. Of three foot landing with some steps. As opposed to, it was quite elaborate front door, porch, whatever it was.
Okay. Any other members of the board have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this application?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public portion and I'd make a motion to approve this application with the compromise of the front porch.
I guess.
I'll have a second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes. We'll memorialize this at our next meeting.
Thank you so much, and for the record, I just want to say I'm a big fan of board-on-board fences, so I thought Laura's suggestion was quite nice.
Go, Laura.
Good idea.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Lastly, let's move on to Lauren, item twelve?
Yes.
Twenty-four dash ZB dash zero eight V, Arvin Patel. Is Arvin Patel present?
Uh, yeah.
Uh, yeah, um, no, he is not present, this is Aditya Tucker, I'm representing Arvind Patel.
Are you an attorney, sir?
No, I'm not an attorney, I am his family member, he he was not able to attend the meeting, so we have the architect Marina Rubina uh present on the call as well, and I'm attending on behalf of him.
Okay, can I give your name again, please?
Aditya, A-D-I-T-Y-A.
Okay, I I have the application before me, um, we are not going to hear from your architect tonight because we need some additional information before we can hear this application. This is a very unusual application, we don't get too many of these applications. You're seeking permission to build a single-family home on a lot that does not front on a street.
Okay.
We will need a letter from the fire official indicating that your proposed driveway will be sufficient to allow emergency personnel and vehicles to reach the proposed new dwelling. In addition, you are proposing a dwelling within twenty feet of a stream. We would like to see some proof that you have DEP permits to permit this. Uh, finally, when you per- when the applicant purchased the property, they may have obtained a title search. If so, we would like you to supply a copy of the title search so that we can understand how this lot came into existence.
Okay.
Okay, uh, that's kind of a lot to comprehend. And if you or the applicant want to contact me or Laura Buckley, the secretary, we can provide that in needed information in writing to you so that you know exactly what we're looking for.
Uh, I will definitely be in touch with Laura tomorrow, yes.
Okay.
Can I interrupt one second, there's also the issue of lot coverage, that doesn't seem to be finalized.
So, John, are you saying that their calculations don't seem to end up?
There's a question raised on it, so amongst the other things, somebody needs to verify.
Okay.
Prediction.
All right, so we're gonna need to carry this matter to a future date. Some of the things that we've asked you for may take some time to obtain. Uh, so I recommend that we carry this to the July meeting, I think it's July eleventh. And if you need additional time after that, just let us know and we can carry it again.
Okay, yes, um, um, I just would like to point out that uh we did get the staff report and the item number one on the staff report, what the e- was the easement. We did get the document uh detailing and documenting the easement into the property uh property. So now we will definitely, I'll I'll reach out to Laura tomorrow and uh try to get this all in the right order.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so anybody here on the Arvind Patel fifty-two School Street application, it is going to be carried to July eleventh with no further notice by the app. Okay, we'll see you on July eleventh.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, we have someone raising their hand, Marina.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She had a question about anything.
Hi, Marina.
Hi, good evening, um, I'm the architect working on this project, is it possible to ask a couple of questions?
Uh, we're we're not going to hear this matter tonight. Um, if you want to contact Laura Buckley or myself, you can ask those questions tomorrow.
Sounds good, thank you.
Have a good evening.
I want to make one other comment, and the stream issue may become much more complex than uh, you you wind up with what they call riparian buffers on some of these streams. And without the board knowing it, we could go through the application, have a long discussion about safety in terms of getting to and from the house, emergency vehicles and for not, because unless you have some kind of indication from DEP that they're gonna allow encroachment into these buffer areas, we 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 just waste the whole board's time.
Okay, appreciate the heads up, John.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, guys, let's move on to item thirteen, adoptions of resolutions from the regular meeting of May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four. First resolution, Reynold Reynoso, would you voted to approve, Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel? Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Next is Mustafa Chitawala, would you voted to approve, Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel? Mr. Reggio?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Finally, NBAD One LLC, would you voted to approve, Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel? Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blunt? Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Those are all the resolutions I have this evening. Item number fourteen, adoption of the minutes from the regular meeting of May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, all in favor, say aye.
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 Number fifteen, notice the movement for adjournment, all in favor, say aye.
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 Once again, thank you for coming out, guys and ladies. See you in a couple of weeks.
Have a good evening.